I'll order the June 11, 2018 Committee of the Whole Meeting. Could I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye.
Motion to approve the minutes from the May 7 Committee of the Whole.
I second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the first item on our agenda is work session with Dr. Randy Bridges, Board and Superintendent to discuss evaluation tool permission. Okay.
Welcome, Mr. Bridges.
I think you've got a couple of documents on the evaluation tool that we have been discussing for a while, but I'm going to give you the short version and the power of one with the jury of the summit picture on the front of all your kids and some of your employees. That's great. So I'll be speaking for that one and kind of let the elegance follow along. And we've done some work going back to January, looking back the other day, getting a lot of input from the board and also spent some time talking with Dr. Paul Sylwet about her input on this as well, so kind of getting along. I want to talk to you about submission and your vision and your values. The evaluation process in and of itself should start by setting goals because you don't know where you're going in a road to get you there. So that also a good place to start for the district and provide the superintendent feedback on those goals to make sure they're leading the district effectively. Evaluation should be based on approved upon goals and I think we'll talk about that a little later on. And also provide an opportunity for the superintendent and the board to spend some time in reflection in terms of developing a positive relationship with their board. Talking about board responsibilities, all steps that are outlined in the evaluation process if you follow, that you would help identify both the strengths and the areas of continuous improvement for the superintendent so that they can improve personally as well as for the district. But the board should speak with one voice and make sure that the process is fair and reflects the superintendent's overall contribution to the school district and also that participate in evaluation discussion and guide the superintendent for the subsequent years as you outline things that you would like to accomplish beyond the scope of those ten goals that we're going to talk about in just a few minutes. Superintendent's responsibilities, obviously the, for me, understand the evaluation process outlined by the board with very good to gather data, to prove evidence of working toward the accomplishment of those goals, developing and implementing strategies to align at those goals and the performance of the school district and finalizing those goals in terms of reporting on the progress made at the end of the year in terms of any part of the evaluation process. Last time we were here, we talked about ten goals, eight of those being the ones that are currently in your strategic plan. We added two at the end, which was basically about ethical behavior and personal skills of the superintendent. I did highlight three of the goals because some of the conversation that you had last time I was here about your budget and those areas that were approved and priority one was goal one, as it relates student readiness, goal four as it related to developing talent, and goal eight, we talked about equitable distribution of resources to your schools as priority items. We're talking about the rating down, the only changes I've made there, it's, I think it's important that as you go through this process, if you use this portion of it, that if there's anywhere that there's an improvement needs or ineffective grade, that that information and specifics of why those were given would be provided to the superintendent because obviously many of us who need improvement would like to know what that improvement is and sometimes that's given in the eyes of individuals, but that should be communicated for both improvement needs and effectiveness. The evaluation process itself, the annual evaluation will reflect the ongoing conversation and the key words in there to me is a leadership team, the board and superintendent working together. Throughout the year, the board should be involved in conversations about those ongoing goals and give constructive feedback to the superintendent for improvement. The board should be an executive session to discuss the superintendent's evaluation as it relates to those goals and also share that information in the executive session with the superintendent. Superintendent has the opportunity to respond to the evaluation and when it's finalized will be signed and placed in the personnel file. The timeline is something we've talked about, establish the goals in July and August. As I said to you before, you have those ten ongoing goals, but there may be certain things throughout the course of the years that you specifically want the superintendent to work on that may not be in the scope of those ten goals and you would have the opportunity to do that. Maybe your conversation just kind of lets you know where things are and of course the end of the year evaluation would be culminating with that. I think that the last time I was here, Dr. Paul Sylwet shared some data points with you, which she's going to take over in just a few minutes and talk about that, was very pleased with because I heard some board members talked initially about not having to wait until October and November for information. And I think she has designed, she and staff have designed some indicators that these marks could be made and information can be shared with the board really in July of each year and I compliment her and staff for developing and I know she's going to talk a little bit more about that and say I've been working on that. So that's the 50,000 feet overview of it and the, another document that's in your packet are, gives some more details and introductory statements and things like that, but that's what I just shared with you, it's just kind of the highlights of what that process would look like. I can wait until after Dr. Paul Sylwet's through with the next few slides or I can just find any questions that you may have right now.
Any questions?
With the tools in here too, that's the tool? Is the tool already compiled, the actual evaluation tool?
Yeah, the, not the one you're looking at right now, but there's another one that's a little more detailed and it has a place under, yes sir.
Under evaluation process, bullet three, four, and five, the way it's written, I'm not sure, I can't remember in the past, but the way it's written, it seems as though the evaluation of the superintendent would not become public information. Am I accurate in that search?
No, because once the board votes and they have to vote in public, and this has always been the way it is. At the point where we come out in public and we vote to accept the evaluation, it's a public document and by law is, is a bit.
And that's what I thought, but when I read this, it talks about, you know, us being in an executive session.
Right.
It talks about evaluation, isn't it, to superintendent in exact session?
There would be a sub point below that, that the board can't, it's not an evaluation until we vote that it's an evaluation.
That's what I thought, but that's not identified in this, in this piece and so I just wanted to make sure that people still do what you've always done, which is vote and just when it says go into her personnel file, that's private, that's, that's not given to the public. So I just wanted to make sure that people still vote on the evaluation in open session and that information's still within the court of duty.
Have to.
Are you trying to fast forward to kind of what happened last time?
Well, that, that's not, it's not identified.
Yeah, we can add, we can add that bullet.
Because the way it's written is, written is.
Right, what you, what we can do is add a bullet that says, evaluation finalized and ratified in an open study board meeting.
Is that answer your question? Okay. What else you have? Grab a call?
What I'm looking for is the academic, academic measure votes. I see, I see the vision and the mission and values that I'm looking for. On earlier we talked about maybe possibly third grade, eighth grade.
Where are calls on the right side of your packet is the, is the student achievement goals for the evaluation.
Yeah, but here's, here's actually two, right here, this is actually evaluation here. I'm looking on here forward.
Could I?
Yes, sir.
If you would allow superintendent to go through her part of this?
Okay, all right, that's fine.
And then I'll come back if you should.
That's fine, yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Thank you. Do you have a clicker?
I do.
Okay, thanks.
And I'll let you.
Thank you. At each of your places, there's a folder that has the additional material things that we're going to discuss in it. So I'm going to start with this page inside the, so we're in this document for those of you who haven't opened it yet, and I'm going to start with the page that matches the one on the screen, the CCSD indicators, the outcomes we seek. On the right.
Which one's that?
That's right. Would be okay by helping find it? It's right here.
There it is.
Right there.
I'm saying if I can.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So on the right-hand side of the folder, as Dr. Bridges mentioned, you find this document that says, outcomes we seek. Outcomes we seek. And if you look on the left-hand side, the first big category is student indicators. The second big category is a focus on equity. That's what you see on the right, in the, in the big red stripe and the purple stripe, focus on equity. Those are the measures that we would be looking at. So the document I'm looking at has a little blue sticker on the top so you can see what, okay? And then the next page in that document, for every accountability measure, there has to be an equal amount of support. So what are the necessary conditions? We'd need to develop talent. There's another section focusing on equity to create necessary conditions. And then below that in the orange stripe, you see there's effective 3K, 4K programs. We need to be specific about what those programs are and the extent to which they are effectively preparing our kids for success in kindergarten and beyond. Then on the next page, we put a glossary of terms. The staff working on this has developed a definition of what those terms mean and on the fourth page of the outcomes we seek are some supporting conditions because you talked about in the strategic plan, you have goals that deal with operations, finance, communications, and legal services. So this picks up those items. What I'd like to talk about today is the fact that of course not all these items are equal. And I also want to emphasize that we are using measures in our profession that don't really help teachers help kids. And that, that's the point I want to make today. I've talked, in this slide I just show, I've talked a little bit about the student readiness. We're looking at early learning outcomes, their core academic development and ultimately college and career readiness and the focus on equity and then the talent development. So if you flip to the next page, you see a slide that looks like this. So if we were to think about measuring our students readiness as a journey, we're currently in Charleston. If we think of San Francisco as the arrival place clear across the continent, we know that our students have to have a Lexile and a Quantile range of about 1,200 in order to be able to get a living wage job. If they want to enter certain colleges, they've got to get that Lexile range up to the 1,400 range and the Quantile range up, Quantile score is up to the 1,400 range. So San Francisco is somewhere between, it's a minimum of 1,200 on Lexile and Quantile score. Now, if we think of, we look at the next slide, if we think of, which is the next slide, if you think of, say Memphis as a fourth grade stopping point, Wichita as an eighth grade stopping point, maybe Denver is in the course, we still have to get kids over the continental divide. And the purpose of this slide is to show that if you look at the circle around Memphis, do you see that blue circle? That's what's measured on the fourth grade test. The fourth grade test tells you who's on level, the fourth grade South Carolina Ready will tell you who's right in Memphis and who's within 50 miles of Memphis.
What test?
The South Carolina Ready, SC Ready. Those achievement tests are designed for policymakers. They're not designed to help educators. So if we think of tests in two different categories, there's one category of tests that helps teachers and kids, there's another category of tests that helps local and state policymakers. So South Carolina Ready is designed to help state and local policymakers, particularly state policymakers. So what is missing from those tests are where all these kids are that you see all over this map. We have kids, and then if you look at the next slide, we have kids who are in Key West, kids who are not in this country, don't speak our language yet, we have kids coming from the furthest parts of everywhere, and what we need is a GPS system to make sure those kids are on a trajectory to get to San Francisco. Does that make sense to you? So the state test, when you emphasize the state test, we get everybody in our system focusing on those kids who have any chance of making it to Memphis and we don't focus so much on the kids that are in Key West or in Portland, Maine. So when we use those tests heavily as outcome measures for district leaders, for principals in, in school, classroom teachers, this is the result we get. What we really want to know is what kinds of assessments can identify where kids are and move them toward that, that long-term outcome. Tony Wagner and Ted Dender Smith wrote a book called Most Likely to Succeed. It was turned into an informational movie, which I think we should try to show regionally. It's a public documentary and we should try to co-host that. Most likely, the name of it is Most Likely to Succeed. And in the book, there's this quote, I wrote it down so I'd be sure to get it right. In 2013, the standardized testing industry yielded 16.5 billion. That same year, the American cinema industry yielded 11.5 billion and the National Football League, 9 billion. The end-of-year testing business is big business and it's, it's made, it's kept alive by federal and state accountability requirements, but it doesn't help one teacher help one kid. It doesn't tell you where a child is unless they're close to those destinations that are tested on the test. It'll tell you whether a child is there or not or exceeds it, where they've gone further, but you don't know where a child is. So we'd like to think about a different system. That would be the one that uses Lexiles and Quantiles because you can, South Carolina will give you Lexile and Quantile information, MAP scores will give you Lexile and Quantile information, almost all the software that we use to help kids learn or any assessment that we would be using is going to yield a Lexile and Quantile measure. That's the coin of the realm, the common currency. So the next page shows you of the, of the students in Charleston County schools who have enrolled in the, in the program called Achieve 3000 and selected a top career. Most of our students chose video game designer as their top career. And when you look, that requires a 1,300 Lexile. So as long as we're moving students toward a 1,300 Lexile, we know and they know how close they are to that goal. That obviously is not a realistic goal, but nonetheless, if you look around that circle and at the other careers that kids are choosing, you see how well a 1,300 goal would serve a lot of different professions. The next page then shows you what it looks like to track that readiness from local jobs. So what we've done is to pull from this study, the Common Skills in High Demand that, that has been published for our region, and a 2016 study about what jobs are going to be available in our area, those jobs that are most prevalent. On the PowerPoint slides, there are a few. Another document in your folder that has a pink Post-it note on it, looks like this. It gives you the Lexile and Quantile ranges for a whole lot of career opportunities. Those that are highlighted in yellow are the high-growth, high-opportunity jobs in our own area. So rather than trying to get kids to score at a certain level on a fourth grade test or a third grade test or a sixth grade test that's given once a year, we need to be focusing on the extent to which we are growing kids toward readiness for real jobs that exist in our area. So this tool shows us what the Lexile range would, the median for Lexile would be, what the median for the Quantile or Mathematics score would be, and the highest high school math required. So we need to work with our State Department. They're requiring our kids to take some advanced-level math courses. It don't serve all of our kids well, they're not getting the basics. So when they get out on the job, employees are telling us we need them to have these, these fundamental skills that they don't have. They've used a graphing calculator to do some functions they, they don't necessarily understand, but we need to make sure that we get the courses in high school designed to get kids ready at minimum levels. And if we shoot to get all of them at a 1,200 or 1,300 Lexile and Quantile level, they'll be able to switch careers later on and do whatever they want to do. So that was the purpose of these slides, just to give you an idea of what it looks like when we try to prepare kids for the real world rather than achieving on a, on a state test. So this slide, I added three at the bottom. We hear a lot about construction workers, carpenters, laborers. Just wanted to point out, that's at least an 1130 Lexile level and an 1160 Quantile level and a high school algebra too. There just aren't jobs that, that pay well anymore for people who haven't reached those achievement levels. And then we put, just so we could see, the level of rigor required to be a dental assistant. That's, a lot of our, our kids as they came across this stage of graduation said they wanted to be cybersecurity experts and dental assistants, so.
Just higher than three of them. According to this chart.
According to that chart it is. So we have tools in our system and the next page will show you one of them that tracks the extent to which our kids are ready. There's a, I should mention this page in your handout, it's not on the slide, but the page is in your handout. It shows you what we could do. This page happens to come from Berkeley County, but Dorchester 4, Dorchester 2, Charleston and Berkeley are working together to see if we can create this kind of local accountability system. This is an example of a page for welding. So if your child at the end of eighth grade, beginning of ninth grade, is sitting down with a guidance counselor to develop the individual graduation plan, this is the kind of information that you would have to work with. Right now, kids don't have this sort of information. On, on the left, it shows the high school courses and the additional graduation requirements, which is primarily what we're looking at now. But on the right-hand side, it shows the opportunities for credentials so students could actually leave with an American Welding Society credential or a National Center for Construction, Education, and Research credential. They're going to get a higher paid, paying job in welding if they have that credential than if they do not. And then at the bottom, it begins to show you the Lexile and Quantile ranges that would be, that, that a student should shoot for. So that's where we're trying to get, to tie all these pieces together so our system makes sense for kids. It's not just accumulating 24 Carnegie units, it's getting ready to do something. That's a huge shift in the thinking in our system. It's huge. So the next, the slide that's on the screen now shows you one of the tools that we use with kids or are beginning to use. In August, about 98% of our kids weren't using this tool, so the gray shows the kids who were not using that tool in August, September, October, November. So as you see the gray gets smaller, you know that more of our kids were using the tool. And the blue, green, and light gray show you what percentage of our kids are achieving at all along, whether they're in, in third grade or sixth grade or eighth grade, who's on, who's on that track, on that trajectory to be college and career ready. So we've never had these tools before. They're new in our profession. This is huge. We've told our teachers their job is to deliver grade-level standards. You heard that last spring, when you heard teachers come to the board and say, they told you MAP test isn't aligned to the South Carolina standards because I teach fourth grade and these are my standards and kids are scoring here. That tells us that our, as all across this country, our teachers have been taught to teach the grade-level standards. We need to be able to personalize, reach where kids are and move them forward regardless of where they are. That's a very different kind of system. So we now have better tools to use. This shows us, this slide shows us one of those tracking tools for the kind of Lexile growth that we want to get with kids. These are, excuse me.
What kind of tool, you, you say tool, but if you go back, it says students on track for college and career readiness. What, what, what they, is it?
What is that?
Right, is it a test? Is it working? Is it ACT? What is that?
That is, and one of the software programs that kids use is called Achieve 3000. If you're teaching biology, the, the program adjusts automatically. Say you're teaching deoxyribonucleic acid, DNA and RNA. The student can read about that, the, the lesson on their Lexile level. So if you're at a 1,400 Lexile level, that program delivers the lesson to you at a 1,400 level. If you're at an 800 level, that program delivers the content to you at an 800 Lexile.
On an individual device.
On an individual basis and on an individual device or at a computer in the classroom.
Right, so then do, and then what's the value of that? I understand the value is comprehension. If you're on a 1,200, you get bored reading an 800. If you're on an 800, reading a 1,200 doesn't help you grow. Ultimately, what's the value of, of Achieve 3000?
So it, it helps deliver the content for students at their appropriate level of challenge. It's intended, it's designed to always create the right amount of stretch. So all the time the child's using it for, say, biology or history, it's stretching their reading comprehension to the next level.
So it's designed to get them to another level as they're learning biology?
It's powerfully intelligent.
And that's called Achieve 3000?
That particular program is called, there are others. That particular, these excerpts came from our year-end Achieve 3000 report that was in your larger board packet for today.
Because that, that seems more like individualized learning.
It's exactly what it is.
And so, that sounds great. And I was hoping I might have covered them because I probably didn't.
It's okay.
The goal is to prepare students for college and career readiness. When some of our students are going to high school, they're significantly below where they need to be.
Right.
Where, when and where are we going to stop the progression of children moving on not being ready to learn, not being ready, not, not being on grade level when it comes to learning and math and Quantile and, and Lexile scores? And we start to obviously change what we've been doing thus far, which is allowing students to matriculate through the system. And then when they get to high school, it's like we got nothing for you because you're not, you're not in a, in a place where you can take the kind of courses you need to take so you can get the jobs that are available. So when do we as a system, I know the measuring that you spoke about earlier starts to have a start to make sense that the state is basically measuring something that means little value to the student.
Right.
And to the teacher.
Right.
And we use that to measure.
Everything.
Everything. But at what point do we as a system start, stop allowing children to go through when we know they're not quite ready? Because to me, that would be the, the point of when we're really being a lot more proactive in creating the kind of student that we want to see. Because if you can't, if you have a difficulty meeting a third grade and, and you don't get caught, you don't get the support, the intervention of the individualized learning, you're in that class where your Lexile's 800, his is 1,200, how do we, how do we do that? What does that look like? How long does that take?
Well, that's precisely the right question and it requires systemic change. Our whole system was designed to do the assembly line. You just pass it on down and you have defects at the end because you hold the time and conditions the same, then you get this huge variance in learning. So what we're trying to do is create a system where the learning is all at at least a 11 or 1,200 level, which means the system has to change, but that requires disruptive, transformative, systemic change. And I'm suggesting we can start doing that and we can drive it with the right kind of indicators. So that's, you couldn't have set us up better for the next few pages. So thank you.
Always going ahead.
So this page that I had. So this page that I had clicked on is an example of how we know by, so far, we have not been able to show how technology distribution in our district has impacted achievement. But we're beginning to put together, the staff, principals, teachers are beginning to put together the right combination of tools and approaches to do that. So we know that three of our highest performing students were at Matilda Dunston, at Mulberry Middle, and at Garrett Academy. Through a combination of the time they spent and their teachers arranging them to spend time and arranging great classroom instruction, we have a third grade student at Matilda Dunston who grew 545 Lexile points between August and May. A student at Mulberry Middle, 440, and a student at Garrett Academy, 470. So you're going to see in just a little bit why that is significant. We can look at it at the individual student level. We can look within a classroom. We can look at a group of students who may have had a particular intervention. And we can, of course, look at it school-wide and district-wide. So the next page in your handout is taken from, I have three different research studies that we pulled these slides from. If you'd like the entire studies, I didn't copy them for everyone because I know you all have a lot to do, but I have them if you'd like copies. This page shows the college and career Lexile levels. It just gives an explanation of the various Lexile scores and what you can do with a particular Lexile score. So if you look at the third column over, after high school, university requires about a 1400, 1300 or 1,400. Community college, about a 1,300. The military, somewhere between 1100 and 1,200 for minimum entry with any hope of being successful. Then you begin to look at the technological and legal tests that have to be taken, what it takes to read the, these newspapers are perhaps a little biased, but what it takes to read certain newspapers and then entry-level career. We've already looked at that, but you see what has to happen beyond high school for kids to keep growing, to be able to do what they want to do next. The next page shows you the proficiency ranges for each grade level. So this is what we look at. We look at pages and pages and pages of these things. So when we, when we create this document for you, it tells you the number of our students who moved forward Lexiles to a certain range, a certain point. These are the kind of charts we take them from. And as you pointed out, this is not an exact science. It probably never will be, but it's far enough along, it's at least 20 years old now, so that we're getting some pretty reliable predictability out of these scores. So for every grade level, we know which students fall far below, which are approaching the target, who meets the target, who exceeds the target. And you can well imagine that each of those groups of students needs different approaches. Another thing we've often done is to select one curricular program for the entire district. That same curricular program does not work well to teach reading to those who are, who come to us exceeding and those who've come to us falling far below. We need a much more intentional and intensive phonics program for those who are falling far below. So our district has to differentiate the instruction, and we have to give teachers the kinds of conditions and tools so that they can personalize. That's not the way we organize and distribute and schedule kids. So it requires that all of us begin to rethink. So this page shows why personalization is important. The next page that you'll turn to.
Are you saying you want to be able to allow principals and teachers to create and or do the kind of programs that would be most beneficial for their students versus us having a program that's generated from the board, from the superintendent, and it filters down because that just may not be working?
That's an excellent question. I think that it's unreasonable to expect teachers, on top of everything else they're doing, to research which programs are most effective. I think that's the district's job. That's the job of our research and development department, and it's capably led by the people who are in this room. But I do think that our district has a responsibility to say, if you have a fourth grader who's reading before, below a 385 Lexile level, here's the approach we recommend. And it includes some of those.
So the teachers would think of it as a library of approaches. And so if I've got 20 kids that are doing this, well, here are the, here's the curriculum approach that works for these kids. And I've got 10 kids in my classroom that are doing this. So I can use two different approaches to curriculum in the same classroom based on where the kids are. So instead of just one curriculum for third graders, there'd be options.
Right.
My concern, then, would be, as capable as the folks in this room are, it's almost like making a decision at 50,000 square feet when the person on the ground is the one that really knows. And I don't disagree with the fact that asking teachers to figure out which curriculum for reading is the best one for their students. But I'm not so sure if I agree with the fact that the folks in this room, although they may be able to research those programs and based on, you know, what those programs present, that they would know what Cindy would need in her second grade class. Because they don't know the students who are in the second grade class. They don't understand the actual day-to-day grind that she's seeing and that she's dealing with when it comes to her students. So how valid is that? I mean, you said they'd be making a recommendation. Would those teachers be able to have some potential pushback and say, I recognize that you think this curriculum would work, but I've done some work with some other curriculum. I think this one you better see for my students. Is it that kind of ad hoc or is it kind of, this is what we recommend, we want to do this?
So I, I think what we can all agree with is that it should be evidence-based, and the evidence has to come from someone other than the publisher. So if we have a lot of evidence that's been replicated in multiple settings that a particular approach and a particular program, you heard people talking about Orton Gillingham this spring, gets results with kids with these kinds of characteristics and at this achievement level, then here's a way to get at that. And when I was teaching, I would have loved to have had kind of a menu of options. And I always think we have to be open to discovery, and we'll talk about that a little bit more. I think that's, this is the true profession of teaching. We haven't had the tools to make it work like it could. We've used a lot of rhetoric in the past about personalization, but we didn't have the tools to make it possible for teachers to actually do that. So Mrs. Coates, going back to your comments, yes and, if the teacher teaches in a school that has four sections of that particular grade level or course, there's no reason why those kids can't be exchanged so that teachers really develop expertise in teaching one particular content. A teacher may become a tremendous expert in teaching fractions where another teacher becomes the expert in teaching slope.
I just, I agree, there has to be some level of flexibility, but it's got to be based on some provable standard. Because I would, I don't know that we can get, when you say a zip code shouldn't determine your education, if you literally individualize it without some sort of commonality, your kid at Mary Ford learns something different than your kid at North Charleston Elementary School.
That's not what this is saying though.
Right, so only for the fact of who that hired. At least this way, there's some standards of why this would be chosen in a school.
But what I hear you saying, I totally get that, but I feel like what we're used at the 50,000 level, I feel like now we're at the 100,000, whatever level. Because the way education is, is we say to all of our 3,000 teachers, here's a template, or here's our cookie cutter, whatever. My words, not, and you do it. And the places where we have people really excel is when those teachers are using the curriculum they have, but also identifying, hey, this is really what this kid needs. So I think we need both of those things. But I can't imagine staying to teachers, you know, go out and find what works best because some of them could do that, but some of them couldn't. So I mean, I like, I like this approach.
Governor Collins?
Thank you, sir. For me, the Lexiles are helpful, the quantile. If I want to know where a student's reading, reading level is, for example, I can look at the Lexile score, but tell me that, or math. But when we're looking at preparing kids for jobs for the local market, a lot of children leave home and go to college in other states to win scholarships, and they, they focus on what I call higher careers. Like here we have some of those were like laborers and movers and bookkeepers, potters and clerks, accountants. And those are fine for a lot of people, a lot of students. But let's say someone wants to go higher in education. They would have a master's in teaching or a doctorate of education. Their aim is somewhat higher than the typical. Maybe they want to be a scientist or a chemist, or they want to work for a bear company. I sort of like, I like more the SAT scores with the standard, even the math scores, the SC ready, which I think gives us a true picture of where students really are academically. And the math majors, where they, how far they grew in that year or so, all that time period. I'm not opposed to using some Lexile at some point, but I think, I think we missed the mark. If we aim at just that, preparing kids for the local job market and not beyond that. But I think we needed that combination where SC ready, math, and maybe some Lexiles in some areas to show us where we are. A combination. For me, the Lexile today is like a, I could just say a game changer. I come in and I have to refocus on the Lexile area and quantile areas, which I'm not, I don't think I'm quite prepared for in that regard. But I'm much more familiar with the standardized testing that's used all over the country. So I hope we can, at the end of the day, we can come up with some kind of a median where we're not relying on just Lexiles alone or quantiles alone because that's not going to tell us, that mean that display, your skills as a superintendent of how well you've moved students yourself. But you may move them 10 times greater than what I ever measured. But anyway, something accurate that really is going to measure anything. But a mixture is what I'm hoping for.
Okay. Thank you.
Like the slide you have on now. The one thing that jumps out at me, or the question that I have is, what was happening at Dunston with that particular third grader to produce that kind of jump?
That's right.
That's what you've been asking for, for all these years. How do you drill it down and then find out what's done? This is answering your question.
What did that teacher do? Were they pulled out of class during the day? Did they get, what kind of intervention did they get? How many days a week did they get? How many hours? What was it? Were they reading at home? Did your parents hire you? Those sort of kind of things, for me, makes all this worth it.
Exactly.
If you can see that this can be done, can we replicate it? Can we, can we boil it down to its bare bones and say, we can do this all across the district, and let me tell you why?
And let me tell you who's done it and how they did it. That's exactly what I think is the best part about this.
I'll be waiting for that answer.
When you have to be jumped like that on the Lexile, bro, how we as a board know, for example, where the student started from?
Yeah.
That's, for example, could have been a student that was, a student that's lost his mother that got better, or a student wasn't learning, or.
Was that third grade student, did that third grade student come into the third grade this year, reading at a kindergarten or first grade?
Yeah, stuff like that.
Or were they on grade level in the?
No, that's the growth, that's the growth.
All right, I got a question. All right, so currently, in this, this is actually kind of a different approach to this question. Currently, some parents will judge schools based on certain numbers they're coming out of school. And they'll decide whether to send their kid to that school or ask us for a transfer to another school. It becomes a self-providing problem. How is this going to play to that? Is this just going to be another set of numbers that parents are going to look at for grades, whether this is good or this is bad or whatnot?
So the state will continue its own rating system. Excuse me.
Oh, okay.
The state will continue that rating system, and we'll have all that information. And people choose to move their children to schools for all kinds of reasons.
Yes.
But when we want to say to someone, let's look at the kind of growth that's occurring in your neighborhood school with kids who are just like yours.
Right.
And we need to own that, whatever it is. This begins to give us a way to have a different conversation. So the next page in your handout.
No, I was just going to ask if we could, we were getting way off in the conversation.
Because we're going to the next part, how do you do this? I hear.
So the next page just shows you how much growth is needed to meet college and career readiness targets. So as you see, the blue would be the expected growth where kids would normally, it's on the page that looks like this. It's called how much growth is needed, okay? And the blue would be what we, what would normally, we would expect to happen. The green shows what has to happen. So now you begin to see why the jumps like the ones we just saw are really critically important and why it's important for us to understand where that's happening, with whom, and under what conditions, so that we can reward that behavior and do whatever it takes to create conditions to scale it. So that's what's really important. But it does require that we think differently. Think about all the different questions you've raised. It requires everyone to think differently about the system, and that is uncomfortable and, as you are realizing, unpopular. So the next page just shows how do I set growth targets? And we don't need to go into all of this today. I just wanted to show you some of the research that sits behind this so that we can work with teachers to learn to do this. But those of us coming into the profession haven't been taught to do this. So this takes professional development time. It takes supports. It, we have to make sure that all of the kids in our system have access to these kinds of tools and that the tools they have access to are shown to be successful with kids who are achieving where they are. The next page, table three, expected reading gains versus reading gains needed to reach college and career ready, is just another way to display that. So if you're in second grade and you're, it shows what your target range is. It shows your annual expected growth in the blue. And over in the green, it shows you how much you need to grow to actually get on the path. And that's your question. How do we do that without retaining kids and retaining kids so we have to build parking lots in middle schools? Because this is, every person in our system needs to know, my job is to grow kids. If I'm a teacher, my job is to show that my kids, at the end of the year, have accelerated their growth on these measures. And we need to be able to be explicit about that and use these tools in ways that, yes, are taken into consideration when we talk to people about the progress they've made during the year, but don't make people feel as though they're going to be fired if they don't get the gains that we all wanted. That message got way off course last year, and we need to course correct with the message. Every single person in this system is here to show improvement at the end of the year. This is, this is the way we want to see the improvement shown. And if we didn't gain in one year, let's look at where things are working and try to do more of that. It's the way every profession works. It's the way the medical profession got to be, the medical profession. And it's now our job to try to build this kind of system. The exciting news is that Dorchester II, Dorchester IV, Berkeley, and Charleston are all, have pledged to work together to pool our resources to try to develop this kind of system that then would feed into a regional progress report that would be what Cradle to Career and other local organizations trying to show progress that's being made would use, rather than using only the state end-of-year measures, which miss a whole lot of our kids. So on this progress report, look, you have achievement, Reverend Collins, which is what you were asking about, but you also have gap closing. And that's just as important as achievement. Over on the right-hand side, you have graduation rate, which is what our state currently measures. But you also have who's leaving prepared for success because that's very different from the graduation rate. Our graduation rate is much higher than our rate of kids who are leaving us prepared. Those things have become unsinked over the years. So the last thing I simply wanted to say today with respect to the superintendent's evaluation is this. What gets measured, gets done. That's the simple truth of it. So we need to make sure that on this chart, we have in the red and the purple on this first page, the real high level. first page, the real high leverage activities are going to make a difference for kids who are currently not doing well in our system. Because when we help those kids, it helps everybody in the system, because the same kinds of techniques apply to those who are reading above grade level. We want to see growth for them. Many of them are languishing and not accelerating as they should. So that's the first point. What gets measured gets done, so let's make sure we get the right measures in here. And then I just want to say, in my view, performance assessments for anybody in the system, the superintendent or anybody else, need to focus on the indicators that will most powerfully leverage the right kinds of system change, because the system was never designed to bring all kids to high levels of achievement. It was not designed for that, but that's what we want the system to do. So we have to create the expectation that all children will leave this school district ready to step productively into the next post-secondary endeavor. Everybody in the system has to understand where we're succeeding and expand what works. That's the whole point of this. It's not to shoot people who don't get it right the first time, but where is this working? Let's reward and, and expand that. And then the third thing we began to do last year and accelerated this year is channeling our resources toward those approaches that are working. So when we find something that works, let's do more of that, do less of what's not working. And finally, this is really important. We've got to have people in leadership positions throughout this district who have the courage to confront our historical low performance and change the conditions that contribute to it. That means changing the system. It is systemic change. It's transformative change. It is disruptive change by definition. It makes people uncomfortable and it, it causes some reaction. And we have to understand that, that that's going to happen and make sure that we're having the response, the reaction about the right things that are headed in the right direction. And I hope that as we finalize the superintendent's evaluation, we really can focus on those outcomes that might be a little scary to focus on, because the system's not ready to do them, but we do it anyway, because it's the right thing to do. So, thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Collins.
Yeah, I want to respond to one of your comments about the, the system not designed to produce all high performing students and not, and not defending the, disrespect your learning. For example, let's take a Todd one school where you may have a 97% African-American population, but you have a staff that's 95, 90% Caucasian and leadership in, in front of the school, throughout the classroom also, say about 95%. Do we, do we really think that, or do we feel that when we have staffs that are almost going to be the opposite of the student population, are we really expecting to see the tangible changes as opposed to we had a diverse staff, recommend these schools to receive, to reach everybody? Like for example, you may have some schools that have 5% or 10% Hispanic and 3% Asian and, and 90% African-American and maybe 1% of Caucasian, but all the staff predominantly would be Caucasian and when you, when you make a statement, it make you think, and this is, and this is the case in some of our schools too also, we have a staff that are predominantly one race. Is it feasible to think that the teachers can reach all the students? Is why you make a statement, maybe perhaps that we're not designed to reach all the students? Or maybe could elaborate more clear. To me, it's unreasonable to think people are going to reach, people have diverse backgrounds when they're all the same and another different background, as when you have a real diverse culture in a school where everybody, everybody can get on the same page and you're going to learn, you learn from this teacher, maybe you learn from another teacher, but that diversity piece is what I'm really getting at.
I'll make four very quick statements about that. One, the system isn't designed to bring all kids to high levels of achievement, because it was designed like an assembly line. And we use the bell curve of achievement. By definition, the bell curve finds out how many kids are on, ahead of the middle and how many kids are behind the middle, regardless of their absolute achievement. You're always going to have half that succeed and half that fail. That's the way a, a, a normal distribution works. That's the whole research upon which education is, is based and our measurement tools are based for the most part. Certainly norm reference measure tools and tools to measure. And then that's the, we, we give all the kids the same amount of time and conditions to learn regardless of, of where they were when they came to us. It's, it's an assembly line system. That's what I'm talking about. The second thing I, I will say is, in an ideal world, it would be wonderful to have all kinds of role models for all kinds of children. We, we want everyone to see that, that success is possible for people who look like me and for people who don't look like me. We, ideally, we would want that. The third thing I'll say is, the Stoll High School has very few teachers of Hispanic origin, but it, Stoll High School's Victorian and Saludatorian are, are both Hispanic, non English, non-native English speakers. So I, I think people of different cultures and backgrounds can teach children. And then the last thing I'll say is, we have to do a better job of getting all of our, our different populations of kids ready to go into teaching and wanting to go into teaching. That's a, a long-term process. The field is scarce. We're doing our best to recruit and, and it's an ongoing problem that we acknowledge freely. We need to do a better job, but until we do, the teachers we have need to teach all kids and they need to teach them well. And those of us who lead need to lead for that to happen.
My question is on, with, is this going to, looking at these sort, so essentially with, whether it's math or with SC ready, we could, both of them can be translated into lexiles.
Everything, everything we use.
Is this going to drive some sort of, like, we stop doing the spring map? Do we, do we change part of the way that we test or?
I don't, I don't think this.
I know this is built to last irrespective of whatever South Carolina changes every three years.
Right. And it's built to last regardless of what our teachers feel they need. Look, I, our teachers and parents would like us to eliminate spring map testing. If we do that, we don't have this growth to show from fall to spring.
It has to have something.
So at the end of the day, we have to really make informed decisions about the metrics that we need. So did you want your, your doctor to take your blood pressure last time and this time?
Right.
Or shall we skip that part? And that's, you know, it's a dilemma. We'll just have to figure out what measures really help people grow kids, figure out where they are. If you don't do the GPS locator, you're going to start working with kids and not know where they are or not know where they finished.
Or not what you need for kids.
Right.
Just a quick, a quick question and quick comment. So are we talking to parents about the lexiles and quantiles in those dashboard meetings that we're doing or will we be doing that?
I don't know. Cindy Ambrose would know.
My kids know their lexiles. So they've been told that by teachers, not by me.
We did. Okay. Okay, and great. And I.
Maybe schools not doing that, Todd.
So, but you will be, right? Cindy, all, all the schools will be doing that.
We get a parent report that I'm seeing media that has that information on there. And how?
Okay.
Question is, are all the teachers doing this so that we don't have pockets of kids not getting that, what pockets of other kids are getting in terms of knowledge of growth?
And what it means, the average parent won't know what this means.
Hush, if his kids have been told their lexile scores and their lexile growth, they understand it. Could you tell me that all the kids in the district are getting?
Is that what we rolled out? That's what we're paying. It, it occurred. And that?
Okay. So those are two of my questions. And I just want to be really clear, because I was caught off guard by this once before. So I'm going to be abundantly clear. The answer is, not all of our teachers know. They're not, they don't all come to us with the background knowledge to understand what this means. It's a relatively new tool and we have to help people, be able to help our kids. That's an investment we've got to make in our people.
Might be something to do, you know, PTO, I mean, PTA training or something for parents so they understand.
It's systemic.
Yep. And just real quickly, I, I have to say this to get this on the record. Reverend Collins, your assumption that students can only learn from teachers who are of the same color is just, it just really bothers me to say that.
That's not my assumption.
Well, that's, that's what you said. And I think I might have more in common with Michael than I do with Cindy and we should have the best possible teachers. You never know.
Michael and I have more in common.
But we've got to have the best teachers and, and clearly, Stoll's a great example. And we have other schools throughout the district that show that. I don't want to get in an argument with you about it, but I just want to get, I just totally disagree with that.
But you misunderstood my point. But my point is when you have an.
Your point's pretty clear.
An all-white staff or an all-black staff or a Chinese staff teaching an opposite race, do you expect everyone to learn?
Yes.
At 100%.
They're good teachers. Yeah, they're good teachers.
That's your belief. But I know it's not realistic. And she just made a statement that we're not designed to get, bring everybody to.
But that's not what you said.
I thought that we were asking questions.
Yeah, we're asking questions. I'm sorry, I had to get that on.
Let Kevin chime in, since he has something he wants to say.
My question, Dr. Fosworth, have you done, looked at any articles that reflect what a good environment would be for, I'm saying for the African-American student? Any peer articles that reflect what may be productive environment?
There are, yes, sir, there are some peer reviewed articles that will say that particularly for populations of African-American children that are, are located a high concentration in one school, that having an African-American staff is beneficial and you can see some achievement gains. And there are some peer reviewed articles that will say that.
I'm curious to find out, somebody texted me the other day, I think at Wanda, had 960 something graduates. And I think only 30 of them are African-American.
No, no, 111. 111, 20. 111.
No, it wasn't 100.
There were 111.
I didn't see 111.
There were 111. I got the data and Reverend Mack and I counted, because that was texted to me. There was not 30.
Yeah, it was texted to me too. So my question.
That's a fact that could be followed.
Yeah, I, I have the fact. I will provide that to you. There are 111.
They didn't graduate on stage.
Yes, they did.
Let Kevin finish his question.
Thank you. My question is, what is the percentage of population there and the success rate then, based on those percentages that Kate just said?
Well, Michael asked Priscilla for us to look at that and she suggested we would look at that, those numbers for all high schools at our next committee of the whole meeting.
So can we get that, can we get that information presented to the committee in the hall?
Chris, this one last, the, the point I'm really getting at, when we look at our data from CSB, African-American kids are learning slower in all the races. But the lobby doesn't see the issue with that. I think issue with that.
I do see an issue with that.
If, if we have the issue that African-Americans are learning slower than other kids, something got to be, something must be wrong somewhere.
That's right. Something is wrong and we're talking about changing it.
I have a question about actual education.
My question is, Jerita, on page 11.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned expected reading gains versus reading gains to reach college and career readiness. The question is, will every teacher, or does every teacher in our system and every school leader, will they have this information per student, number one? Will they then be given the roadmap to make the gains that are necessary and then be provided what's necessary to move them to reach the reading gains and the gains needed to reach college and career ready? That's, that's my first question.
I, I hear it. And the answer would be, that's the ideal state and we are not there yet. That's probably a two to three-year journey to get to that point. Not every teacher has access to these tools yet.
And then my, my next statement is.
Page 11 on this.
And then my, my next statement is, is in regards to Reverend Collins's comment, which was predicated on something Jerita said, but then rebutted by Kate. When you said that you felt the system wasn't created to have equity across the board when it comes to academic performance, I agree with you. I just don't know how it's been able to go on so long, right? Like, I don't think it was ever created, I don't believe it was designed for all kids to achieve at this rate. I just don't believe that.
That's right.
I believe it was systematically put in place to make sure that some kids would perform, some kids would not.
That's right.
Reverend Collins's point was about schools that have high populations of African-American students and yet we have 12, 13, 14, 15% of our teachers being African-American. It would then want to say that schools who have high populations of African-American students, but have higher populations in percentage of staff and, and school leaders that do not look like them, they may have been a level of apathy that said, well, you know, these kids are poor, they're black, what more do you expect? I'm hoping that wasn't the intent when those teachers and those leaders first came into that system, but it damn sure feels like that's what they adopted. Because if they had not adopted that, the results would be different. Now, if they didn't know how to make those gains, then that's a function of the teacher, the school leader and the district not being able to provide them what was necessary to make those gains. If the district did make, provide that kind of information and those kinds of research and things that could be proven to do that and it still wasn't done, then I don't know who to blame, I don't know who should get the blame. But I feel, since I've been on board, that I am to blame two of our students, because we sit, I sit among the nine of you and it's our job to make sure that our children will be college and career ready. And if they are not, and nothing burns me up more than somebody coming to us and saying, well, Mr. Miller, you know, the kids are poor and retarded like kids, as if the expectation should be different.
Yeah, a little.
For, for those children, because they are who they are. That bothers me. And if our system is, and has to okay with that, I agree with you, then no, this system does, it needs a complete total overhaul. Maybe not even a overhaul, maybe just to burn the system down and start from scratch. And if that offends people, then damn it, let it. If people are offended by it, they ought to be, because we can't have the kind of gaps that we have in our system and we all not be offended by that. And if the teachers in our classrooms are not, if the leaders at the schools are not, if people get offended because Reverend Collins might say, well, this school had predominantly white staff, the schools, the students are all black, the school's been outperforming for 15, 20 years, then that shouldn't make you offended. But putting emotion aside, if we're not looking at a proactive way of raising these schools to get our kids to be college and career ready, then all of us need to not be here. And that's just not the nine of us, that's everybody in this room. That's everybody in our school. So if it offends people to read them, let it offend them. But this is the work that must get done and we can't wait another second to do it, as far as I'm concerned.
Priscilla, then Todd, then Eric.
Chris, I was before any of them. I was after Kate.
He's in charge.
You spoke before we jumped to Kevin.
I never got to finish what I was saying.
Yeah, we got out of control after Kevin. Kevin probably.
And that's the thing about it. Whenever someone asks you a constructive question, you feel like you have to jump in and rescue. I want to have a good dialogue with my superintendent to kind of understand where she's at, where I need to be at. I sat here and wrote and I dipped my head in it, but I looked again, I got five peer reviews and I want to read them and I want to know what makes the best fit for my community. I don't need to wrestle about something, I want to give an opinion.
Well, I, I apologize for doing that, but it, it's frustrating to me to be sitting on the stage at a graduation and have somebody text me and say, I hear there's only 30 African-American students.
I got texts too.
Right, but that was not true. And so we have the data and that's fine and we need to look at.
We can share the data. So can Joseph also?
I'm not a part of that. My total questions are totally different.
It's fair that you should be able to make a comment.
We just brought it up, so you were.
All right, all right, Priscilla and then we'll go to Todd. And then, did you already comment? Well, we'll put you in the list.
So I raised my hand to respond.
I'm not commenting, I want to actually ask about this.
To respond to Kevin about the graduation rate. If you work in high schools, children don't, children, students don't, aren't always walking the stage for a variety of reasons. They're in the hospital, they're locked up. They didn't finish one class and they're going to finish it at the end of the summer and they're going to get their diploma later. There's a variety of reasons. Their parent and grandpa died, they got to go to a funeral. There's a variety of reasons you don't see those kids on the stage. And I'm not making any excuses why people aren't on the stage. We will not know until September, because there's kids who maybe need one, two credits over the summer to get their diploma and the actual accurate numbers. And believe me, at the end of the year, everyone who works in high school tries to get that all together, that the kids aren't always on the same page as the adults. So that's just how, that's reality. In reaction to you. In reaction to you, sorry, because I don't say much, but now I'm ready. In reaction to you, coming from the outside and having taught in a different school district, or the thing you're asking for, I've seen and experienced and been involved in, I come here and I, and that's why I ran for superintendent. I'm like, why is it that we don't care? And all I can say is, for 50 years, it wasn't done here, and that's whoever's to blame, it's time to stop. Because it's time to stop because it's wrong. And I'm, and I don't care, I'm not blaming anybody. Not even nobody. And that's what Jerita is offering us. And these people sitting out here are professionals. Now, I'm a professional, and I'm insulted every time someone questions the professionalism of educators. They do know what they're doing. Yes, they can work with teachers and principals and stuff to develop things in schools. And you know what? These guys are doing it every day. And for people to sit here and deny that they're doing that, it's, I have to defend them, because it's, that's what they do.
Let Cindy ask her question a bit, Todd and Eric.
So, I agree that, and this is actually mirrors a conversation, or something that you said when you first arrived. And I absolutely agree that the school system isn't designed to catch outliers. And it's not Charleston County School System. I mean, three children from the same house, one went to college, one never graduated from high school, and one's a laborer. The house wasn't the difference. The schools weren't the difference. We all went to the same schools. The difference was, if you weren't ready to absorb that lesson and move on, there wasn't anything to catch you back up. And I can, I can, we can speak to those examples as realities over and over and over again. It's, it's a system that says, three children can come from the same house, go to the same middle school, and come out with three very different results, based on the fact, can the system catch each of those children individually, or should we all fit into this one thing? And no, I don't believe that prestige needs to have a more diverse teaching program in order to attract Caucasian students, nor do I believe that the reason their achievement is below what it should be is because they've given up on four black Title I students.
Does Queens give up on them?
That's the worst performing school in the district, and I do not believe it is because they don't believe the kids can learn.
That's not how the kids got here.
So, my question is-
That's silly, though, that's very silly.
Remember that comment.
If the object is to create what is the most important outcomes, my fear is, we have an entirely too many things we're measuring, or we've got to weigh them very carefully. Because if you, and we're talking about the, the measurements, if, if having a student leave career and college-ready is the most important thing, but there are 30 things being measured, you could literally not focus on that and still have an excellent evaluation result. That is a concern I have when you have too many of these. We might want to discuss, how do we pare these down? And assume, because I realize early education is an absolute indicator, and we also know that there's a group that believes that all of those gains are lost by the fifth grade, and there's a group that believes all of those gains won't show up again until the fifth grade. So maybe you do K and you do fifth grade, and you assume that second, third, and fourth have to be working to get there. But I don't want to come up with measurements in which there's 50 measurements when there's only one necessary result from K-12 education. So I would advocate that we talk seriously about how many things we measure and how we rate them, so that the most important things don't get measured with the same intensity as other things.
Did you want to answer that question?
I think it's a good point.
Okay.
With, so then, time is back to superintendent evaluation.
Yes, sir.
Six, nine months. With presumably, this, these metrics are going to be tied, if they're tied to individual student, and to the teacher, and to the principal, then the next question is, what's acceptable growth for a child, for a classroom, for a school, and for the superintendent? So I would just, I argue I'm going to come through with a proposal for that.
That's a good question.
And then last, is, are we doing budgeted professional development to educate teachers? Because it is new thing this year.
We, we are targeting, the staff is targeting professional development to build the skills that teachers need in order to personalize and differentiate toward college and career readiness, generally speaking. Cindy Ambrose and staff have been working on, on increasing understanding of what L Styles mean, how to use them, and how to, what, how the metrics work. We have not had any discussions about tying specific kinds of growth measures to, to evaluation for anyone other than the superintendent.
Okay.
The teacher, the teachers, we're going to talk about that today, the ADEPT program evaluates teachers on four things: planning, the instruction that occurs, the environment in the classroom, and their professionalism. And so, we, we have to be really careful. We do need to discuss it, but not in a threatening way.
Yeah, yeah, no, I don't want to go down that path again.
And that's where we got tripped up last year, trying to have this conversation about roster verified scores. All of that was lost in all the conflagration that occurred. So it ultimately, we, we all have to, have to know, we're here to, to make sure more kids leave us being college and career ready. That's it.
But as long as the conversation's being had at an individual and classroom level.
Yes.
If, if this is what we expect, then we at least ought to be inspecting it consciously at the classroom level.
Exactly.
Even if that's just between the teachers and the principals.
The discussion around instruction is, was the instruction effective? How do you know if the instruction was effective? You're looking at results. And we need to be able to do that in a non-threatening way.
Right.
And in a way that rewards and acknowledges those professionals who are making a tremendous impact and using their expertise to expand practice. Did I answer that well enough?
And we are budgeting for professional development along those lines this year.
As, to the extent that we can, given all the other things we're required to do for professional development.
Reverend Mack.
So I think we have an opportunity to look at some of the issues, and we kind of got us a little bit, but then I guess I can tie it back to the superintendent evaluation. You know, there are a lot of variables that, that looks into how do we get teachers to, to address some of the issues that Reverend Collins talked about two minutes ago. If we look at some of the variables, there are a shortage of African-American teachers, which tends to pose a quite a problem for us to try to just recruit more African-American teachers. One of, one of the things that, that we ought to look at as a board, as a governing board, is to find ways, we, we educate kids every day. That's the business that we're in. So what we ought to be doing is, as a, as a county board trustee, is look at ways of how we can partner with, with our area colleges, and find ways of directing path for those that are, that are rising seniors, and promoting them to go into education, so that we can kind of fill that, that low number of, of students that's going into education. I think we have an opportunity to, to, to make good or to do better than, than what we have presented before us. The other thing is, is that we have to be mindful that we are not, we are educating every student that walks through those doors. And as board of trustees, I believe our job is to make sure that we have highly skilled individuals inside the classroom, teaching our kids, whether they're black, blue, brown, white, purple, whatever the case. It's our job. And if we see where there's a shortage of particularly African-American students, then, then I think we have to roll up our sleeves and try to find ways of, of increasing those numbers, and, and that way we'll have more candidates or more individuals enter our classrooms. But, but the goal is not to, is not to just seek African-American teachers. I think the goal is to make sure that we have the highest qualified individuals inside our classrooms, making sure that we're teaching all of our students.
Results, that's right.
I, I believe that's what the goal is. So, so if we go back to September of 2015, Cindy, I got you on this one. If we go back to September of 2015, I believe that's the year you came in July of 2015, correct?
July, yep, just 2015.
The first thing the superintendent placed in front of us was a list of, or a chart that clearly displayed where our Caucasian students are, and where our African-American students are. Clearly, clearly the superintendent said to us, and all of us sitting around the table, that this is a problem, and that we needed to do something about it. Now, it's not going to happen overnight, but I believe that we have been, at least, I can speak for myself, from, from that point on, trying to find ways of working with the superintendent and staff, like, how can we make things better for all students? But then on how we're able to close the achievement gap. I believe that the staff, like Priscilla said, has been working tirelessly along with the superintendent, trying to find ways of closing this gap. And I believe that we have a plan in place now, moving forward, after redefining and looking at ways of, of areas that was lacking to where we can better improve it. I, I know I'm over my two minutes, but, but I believe that we have done that work. So, so as a, as a board, I think we ought to, we ought to just roll up our sleeves and just say to the superintendent and to staff, thank you for the work you've done, tell us what we need to do so that we can push to achieve, to move this bar up, and change those numbers to where they're low to where they become to be high. If, if we keep going back and forth about this fighting, we will never get the work done that really needs to be done. And it's not about us, it's about the students. And it's about every child that enters into this classroom. So I, I think that's where our energy needs to be focusing on, how do we make things better? And how do we give superintendent and staff the tools that they need to, to move this bar even higher?
Well said.
That's all.
I do a lot of research, national research, because I don't like to just focus here, because there's a lot of other stuff going on. There is a shortage of African-American, and Latino, and Native American, and Asian-American teachers throughout the country in all kinds of school districts. It's a problem, they all know that it's a problem that needs to be addressed. But if kids aren't going to school to be teachers, where are we going to find them? And my thing is, forget the colleges, start in high school, with courses, you know, letting kids know the available things that they do when they grow up. And quite frankly, I've worked in high school, not a lot of kids want to be teachers. And you know what they used to say to me? Because I know how kids treat you. And, and that, that's one of the reasons why lots of kids don't want to go into teaching. Having been one, you don't go to make a lot of money, you go for your passion.
That's true.
Is there any further, Reverend Collins?
Yeah, this is the question on this, the actual evaluation, that, the draft, so. No, I can't remember your name again.
Rembrandt.
Dr. Bridges, that's right. Dr. Bridges, I'm going to use goal one, for example, in the evaluation, Dr. Superintendent goes, in the evaluation form, and it says maximize academic achievement, to ensure every student's career, college, and citizenship ready, student readiness. Then you have, they have this default selections, highly effective, effective, down to ineffective. My question is, let me take the, the data from these pages here. Are we, are we addressing, are we addressing, for example, the third grade, and the first grade, and the eighth grade? Are we putting it all into one, all into one point, or into one question, and, and a single answer to answer all the academic question? Or are we doing it that way, or is it going to be broken up? We can look at the third grade, and look at the fifth grade, and look at the first grade, and, and give a score in that area? What did you have in mind?
Typically, Reverend Collins, from the superintendent's position, just pointing out on that.
Yes, sir.
I look at all the information systems, as the district. So yes, I want to know what the third grade reading scores for the district were, and so on and so forth. So, is that a part of it? Yes. Is it, we're going to have highly effective, effective improvement needed, or ineffective on every single one of those? If you're going to do that, that's going to take a long time, a lot of information, how to gather that.
Yeah, that's what Cindy said.
Obviously, it's going to be a part of the conversation.
So, so Dr. Bridges, I guess the point I'm making, I say, I say she's doing extremely well in eighth grade, but maybe third grade needs a whole lot of work. Then if I have to pick one grade, or one, or percentage to give her for that, that makes it kind of difficult, if it's all in one box. Whereas I may want to give excellent for one category, but I don't think it's excellent in another category. I guess that'd be more like a summary, the way, the way it's written now. But I don't, I don't want it to be, I don't think I'd like it to be a summary that encompasses that much data. Maybe, maybe we have to find some ways to, to put some of it together, and break some of it down, but not necessarily every, each little thing we do. I don't necessarily mean that, but I don't, but I don't put all the academic in one box and one question, that we assign a score here that way. Otherwise, other methods might be different. But for me, it'd create a challenge.
I would put it in one box, and it would 90% of the entire evaluation at one score.
Yeah, but, yeah, but it's not, though.
But we can make it that way.
Why don't you let Dr. Bridges wrap this up?
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Good question, but as I said, I think it would be significantly a part of the whole conversation, wouldn't be just one. I, I would just add that, I try to jot you things down, now, as equipped with this. By the time people use the word change, you get different reactions, and sometimes I use innovation. And that's why they mentioned disruptive innovation, disruptive change, or sustaining change, or sustaining innovation. Which means you take the current system, you're going to, in the same base, tweak it a little bit, and try to move the needle forward. And you're not going to deal with a two-sided effect. The disruptive innovation is what's probably going to move. And it may take you backwards first before you go, but the answer to that is, how's it working for you right now?
Not well.
Some people love it. So if, 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 from your roles, holistic-
Have the more courage to vote on it.
How's it working for you right now? And if you're going to say, well, we're just, sustaining innovation's all we need, because we need to kind of stay right where we are, then okay, you can do that. I think the first session that we had, I asked you the question, what does a 21st century school board look like? Ask you to think about it. And if it's to do things we've always done, then you'll probably get the same results.
That's right.
And I could tell you, and I've been around a minute, and most of you all probably know that. Some of the information that Dr. Hulker and the staff have put together in that matrix is really good stuff. And it's information that, that progressive boards, which is what you all want to know, on this left hour, front hour, and, and you, you can't get away from the state accountability piece, because you're going to do it. Is that designed to help kids? I don't think so, I never have, not just in South Carolina, but across this country. If you look at test scores, the last 10, 15 years, the data support, they're basically been flashed, anywhere you look at it. So, do you continue just saying, well, let's work hard? Or, let's create something different that looks at kids differently in their learning processes, that will move them forward to be that list of things that they said they're interested in? That's different, that's disruptive innovation. And that comes with some pain, and some disagreement. But at the end of the day, I think it's a just thing for your kids.
Well said.
So, how do we take all this and turn it into an evaluation tool? That's the question. Chris is, Chris was literally talking about what we, what we measure on the evaluation tool, but at some point, we've got to come up with the document. And I, I think we're no closer to that now than we were at the beginning of this conversation.
Oh, I think we are.
So how, so, so what, Chris wants, Cindy wants it pared down, because I think we've got to have a lot of, a lot of value and a lot of weight to the things that matter the most. Chris wants to see the intermediate scores and rate those, because it's not okay if it's just eighth graders doing well, if sixth graders aren't. Where are you, Kate, my Eric, Priscilla, mine, Chris?
Obviously, we're further ahead than we were first started, by all means, I mean.
No, I meant today.
No, but we're, we're being disruptively innovative today.
So, yeah, we've kind of gotten off of, you know, of what we're really supposed to be talking about, and unfortunately, that I caught. But I believe that we can have something, I'm speaking for Dr. Bridges, that, that we can bring forth to the July award.
Do you think we're bringing 35 measuring points?
No. No.
Because that's what's on here.
No, but we, we're going to have to bring together the consensus of what we learned at all these meetings.
Right, so that, that was my, that's my question. How do we get from here to there?
Which is?
Remember, we kind of talked about effective thirty-five. If you're going to measure all these things, then you're going to have a hard time. So, what is the, the common thread with the organization in your community, its strategic plan? That's why you have ten goals, that's your team. Now, can you fit these pieces in part of what, that's why they're supposed to give you with all that information, is just more data points? But I think your evaluation piece can center on those ten goals. And, I mean, there is what you say you are about, and if that's the case, then that's it. So, you can decide if you want to add some additional things to that, or, but I think you need to stay in that ten-goal arena, because I don't think you can talk about anything just not on that list.
So, yeah, my, my, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I was going to say, my suggestion is, just piggyback on what Dr. Bridges just said, you know, within the ten goals that has been identified with, in tiding with the strategic plan, I mean, is there anything else in addition that you're looking for that's not included in the ten goals?
No. Where I am is, I, I, and, and remember, we're trying to create this, not for how we would do it, but for how it, it's going to be done for a long time to come with different players. And goal number one, I, I feel like if you don't tie it to something specific, it is opinion.
Right.
Because if, if fifty percent of these are being done, then someone's going to come, look at this and say, "Nope, ineffective," because only fifty percent of this is being done. If fifty percent of this is being done, then someone else could say, "Well, you know what? It was forty percent last year, so that is highly effective, we've increased it." So, that's where I struggle, is while this is very tangible information, and it is exactly how it should be, and it should be very black and white in terms of, if you expect seventy-five percent of something and you get sixty-two percent, you didn't meet the goal. You didn't, there's no time to take you out back and shoot you, but it's also no time to say, "You did the goal." So, right now, we've got very specific information, but we don't have a way to say, nine people of, out of fifty thousand in ten years are going to interpret this, and it's going to, and we're each going to come up with the same answer here. It's still going to boil down to what an individual feels they want to put for goal number one, and that's where I'm not seeing the connection.
All right, that's what I'm saying.
If, if in the, if in the June 25th meeting, the board were to approve this plan generally, this written draft, then if for the July committee of the whole, the staff could take each of these ten goals and come back and propose the indicators that would be underneath of them, using many of the items from this document dispersed throughout, narrowing to those that we feel are the highest leverage activities and outcomes, would that work?
It could mean to do, do, do it all at one time and be done with it.
Well, if, if the board will approve this general direction, then it's worth the staff investing time on the details under each category.
I just wanted, I just know, we've been through this before, and when we get to that point, and they come back and tell you that there's three indicators for goal number one, Reverend Collins, are you going to be okay with only measuring three?
No, no, not with it.
At the end of the day, the majority will care.
Right, that is, that is bringing back sound and we'll vote on it.
That wasn't the end of my question, thank you. But if it's thirty-five, I'm not going to be okay with that.
Yeah, but it'd be reasonable.
So, before we send them to start shooting arrows in the dark on the measurements for this, do we need to be, give them better direction? Or do we not care that they're going to go shoot arrows in the dark and on June, like you said, Reverend Collins, and on July, they're going to come back and we're going to say, "No" to this, add this, do that, or should we get more?
We've talked about this, I think we've talked about this for probably seven months. I think that staff has a pretty good consensus of where we are on, on different things, and we've got all of this data from Dr. Bridges. I think we, Eric and I can work with staff and bring back something that then we can, we can vote on and up or down.
Rip the Band-Aid off and get it done.
So, let me ask you this, then, when, when we meet for the next meeting, when we talk about this, can staff now and Dr. Bridges begin to work on implementing, putting those goals into the evaluation piece now, and let us get a rough idea what it looks like over the next two weeks, start working on it now, instead of waiting? That only coming, it'd be much easier if we already got...
What if we, what if, we can't do that, what if we can get it to you earlier than we normally would?
Well, just what I'm saying, if you go ahead and start giving us your thoughts of where you're kind of, where you're going at, we could be in the seat now, early, and early is better, is good too. And that way, we kind of, like, we have one piece we're dealing with, and we can edit it, we can shoot it up or down, or we can fix it, but we might have to keep meeting again every, every so many weeks, but same thing over and over again. The bottom line, the bottom line, I kind of agree with Cindy, you know, we can have a reason, a reason, a reasonable amount of objectives on the academic side, whether it's third grade or eighth grade, a reasonable, reasonable amount of goals, other than that, we can, but I think to me, academics are mostly important, because part is academic.
I think what I'm hearing is, we'd like to get something that's concrete, so we can go ahead and finish this sometime sooner rather than...
Definitely.
All right, so, do we need anything else for Dr. Bridges? He's done a wonderful job. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Bridges.
Thank you, Dr. Bridges.
All right, so, the next matter on our agenda is to be in executive session. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'm moved that we go into executive session.
All right, I need a second.
Thank you.
All right, hold the paper. Can you oppose?